Or do you want to do roll call? Or do roll call first?
Counsel member Schroeder?
Here.
Counsel member Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Counsel member Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Absolutely.
All right, we've got a proclamation first, and Purple Heart community speakers are here, and it's Louis Cologne and Jen Leas-
Julius.
Julius and Salet. Awesome. So, Russell, if you'd read the proclamation?
Sure. This is a proclamation for designating the town as a Purple Heart community. The town of southwest- whereas the town of southwest ranches, Florida, and our community have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have and are selflessly serving their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, and whereas citizens of our country have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force, construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service, and whereas the town of southwest ranches seeks to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal, and whereas the town of southwest ranches, Florida, proclaims to be a Purple Heart community honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedoms. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and town council that the town of southwest ranches shall henceforth be recognized as a Purple Heart community in recognition of all Purple Heart Medal recipients dated this ninth day of March 2017. Mayor Doug McKay.
Awesome. If we could get out and get a picture with them, would that would be okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah. You all want to get up and say something before we come down there?
My name is Louis Cologne, and I spoke- I wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak on December 8th, you know, and you listened to what I had to say. I appreciate it. We as veterans appreciate it. You're saying thank you for your service to the veterans, and now we're saying thank you for your service for doing this for us. We really do appreciate it, and it means a lot to all the veterans, you know, and not only combat, but all veterans aside.
Would you tell us a little bit about that bike outside?
Oh, that's a 2001 Harley, and what I did was I built it as a tribute. I'm from New York, 40 years in New York, and I built it as a tribute to the events of 9/11. I tried to memorialize all the different departments, police, fire, you had the guys with the boats, you know, the- what they call the- what's the- no, the-
The ferries?
Yeah, right, the right Staten Island ferry. They were taking people off the island, you know, after that happened. I tried to do things. I got all the names of all the police officers that died, all the Port Authority, New York City Police and all the firefighters, they're on that bike. I ride with them in my heart, and they're with me, and I just try to show people you can't forget, you know?
It's a beautiful piece of artwork. I don't know if everybody got a chance to stop and look at it, but-
Thank you very much.
Absolutely amazing.
I got a Vietnam bike that has five grenades and Gatling guns as exhaust. I'll bring that one day.
Okay. Would you like to say something?
I'm gonna make it short. He is already said most of everything. I just want to say thank you for even having us here, and mostly thank you for the township, for making this a Purple Heart township. It means a lot to us veterans for the chapter of military order of the Purple Heart, which is always a medal that's chartered in Congress. So that's something to be proud of, but I'm definitely proud to be here. Anytime that the Lord has blessed me to represent my comrades, even the ones that has fallen that I know of, I always tell him that I was kept here to keep things going for all veterans, and anything that I can do for the township here, I appreciate it if you will let us know. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? Huh? That's what we're doing? Any of the public that wanted to speak, make sure you fill out a card.
Public speakers, we have a packed house tonight, Gage Aples.
I won't need a lot of time. I have a question. How come we don't have much on this agenda? How come we're meeting and we have the staff here and you people are here? And when I looked at that agenda, you notice I haven't been here lately because I look at the agenda to see if I need to come or not, and I thought, you know what? I gotta find out why they're having a meeting when there's nothing on the agenda. Do you people have nothing else to do? I mean, you could take and kind of combine it, and I remember you said you wanted to give the opportunity for anybody who wanted to come here, even though you had nothing on the agenda, and say something. But I have to tell you that the town has made tremendous advances, and what's happened is people have a problem, they come in here, or they call one of you to resolve it, or at least put them in the right direction, other than if you're addressing, say, 190th or something of that nature where the masses come in, you know, to address one of their problems. But I just think that it's kind of a waste of everybody's time at this point to- I mean, because they will get up here during public speaking at a regular meeting when you have an agenda, but today you really don't have an agenda, so I just thought maybe you might at least consider staff. If you guys want to meet, you got staff sitting here too, and they put in long hours, they really do, and they do a great job. But I see a lot of people in here now asking questions and getting help, so, thank you.
No more public comment? Seeing public comments closed, nobody else would like to speak?
Board.
All right. Board comments?
Yeah.
All right.
Neil Hollingsworth, Chair of the Comprehensive Plan. This next Thursday, we're having a meeting on the comprehensive plan, and we are going to be discussing the- and making suggestions to the town council on the five-acre parcel on Griffin Road and 163rd, and we will have a presentation by the town staff on the property, and then the board will present suggestions for changes to the comprehensive plan that would affect this property, and then we'll discuss and vote on the recommendations of the board to the council on this property. The following month, we're going to discuss possible changes to the plan for the industrial use category and see if there's any changes that we want to make. It was impossible for the town to make any changes to this category prior because we did not own it. This is the former CCA property. Now that we own it, we have- if the council votes on it, since we are the owners, we have to have the authority of the owner to make the changes, and since we're the owner, we can make the changes. It's that simple. So we're going to review it and see if there's any areas that need to be changed or added. So that's the following meeting. I'd like to invite everyone out there on TV land to come to the meeting, put their two cents in, and if they can't come to the meeting next Thursday night at 7:00 here at Town Hall, please email, call, text Andy Burns. I'm sure he will appreciate it, and with that, thank you very much, and this is one of the reasons why we have a meeting.
Okay. Next Wednesday is the Parks Board meeting? Yeah, I think it's Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, sorry about that. I go to too many meetings. Tuesday, and at that time, we'll be discussing the five acres and so on and giving our recommendations at that point. We did have some discussion on it at the last meeting, but at this meeting, we're going to have a presentation and go from there and see what the mood is of the Parks Board. Thank you.
Okay. One thing I'd like to double-check or clarify, I don't know that the council sent to the Complan Board to review the 25-acre site, did we? Okay, so I don't know that we want you addressing that at this time.
For what?
The 25-acre site. CCA site.
The CCA site is the industrial use category, part of the comprehensive plan-
It's M4.
... within our purview. You may not have sent it to us, but we can discuss it and send recommendations to you.
Steve? You can tell them yes or no.
Okay.
You're in charge, not them.
Steve? No, I didn't know if you had anything. I was looking at-
Regarding that?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've discussed this at the board in the past, that this was not presented to them as a discussion item, and that they can discuss it and they can make a recommendation, but that does not mean that the council is even going to hear the recommendation. That's- but it's their prerogative, it's a town board. I, you know, I guess we could dictate to you, don't talk about it. I wouldn't do that, you know? I think the board, we value, you know, your time, your effort, if that's what you want to do and you want to discuss it, but I can tell you that, as I said in the board meeting, that this was not presented to you and that it's highly unlikely that the council will take any action on it at this time.
My guess is, myself, is that I think we want to leave all options open at the moment. I don't think we're looking to get it defined right now, so that's kind of what our thought process is moving forward. I think, is that accurate?
I think that's accurate.
Okay. All right. Anyhow, Councilman, Dee, would you like to go first?
Okay. I will. First, I'd like to say good evening, and I'm glad to see everybody. Freddie, I am so happy that Sarah is home and doing well.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
Thank you for the flowers.
I'd also like to congratulate Gary Jablonsky for another victory and some of the best chili in southwest ranches.
That's worth it.
And I also agree with Gage Aples that when the agenda absolutely has nothing on it except for maybe the approval of minutes, that it probably should go to another meeting. I see staff is here, and I know December was excused because of Water Matters and money's in the back, but it does require a lot of effort, a lot more time, I believe more monies are being spent, and I think if there's nothing on the agenda, we could probably move it to another meeting, unless it's something that's advertised and we have to be here. Not that I'm trying to get out of any of the meetings, it's a TV spot, you know? I like that, but I just think that the staff would really appreciate getting home, and Andy's got a long drive, and, you know, he would probably like to get out of here at 5:00 and sit 45 minutes in traffic like he normally does. Correct?
Dee, I'm going to join you in this just a minute. You know, we have a lot of regular people that come. We love people coming out. Mostly, people don't come out unless they have an issue, and at that time, they have an issue, they'll usually, prior to that, they'll end up calling me or somebody else. They have all our cell phones, or most of us, they have all our cell phones, or- so I get contacted, you know, I'm in here, I don't know if I'm in here daily, Andy, or every- at least every other day.
Almost once a day.
Almost once a day. So I see a lot of people in here, whether they're here for CAP government or permitting stuff, or just town stuff, or whatever, so I always ask people, have you been helped yet, and different stuff like that. So I think we're doing a pretty good job as the communication side and accommodating the residents as best we can. So I would tell you, I would side, and we've had the discussion before, we're all in favor of having the residents come out and speak to us, but I would tell you that we're wasting staff's time. We don't mind the time us up here because we signed up for this job, okay? But I would tell you that I don't know that the rest of the staff signed up, well, we got- don't have anything on the agenda, so it would kind of be a request of mine that if there's less than three or five items on the agenda that have no time issues or whatever, to consolidate them with another meeting, unless it's got an issue. But I'm just joining you on that, on my approach. Freddie, go ahead.
I'm fine.
Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's no secret that I don't agree with that philosophy, but I'll express it one more time. It's- I think it's critical that when we have a scheduled meeting, that the residents can count on the fact that the lights are going to be on, the doors are going to be open, the TV screen's going to be going, the TV camera's going to be going, and they're going to have the opportunity to address the council of their town. We're here to serve the residents. I appreciate that it does take extra effort for the staff to prepare this, that they're here tonight, that it takes extra time, but they also signed up for that. We all signed up for it, and frankly, we're here to serve, and we're here to serve the residents of our town, and this is one way we do it. And, you know, we don't know who's going to walk through that door. It's easy to say for the folks that are normally come in here on a regular basis that they would know that it's not here, but I can't imagine that we would have a Thursday night at 7:00 and a resident come up here on a normal council night and look in the window and see the place darkened because we canceled the meeting. That's not what we're about. We're about serving the community, and this is a small price to pay, in my book, to be able to serve the community. So I strongly support, even if there weren't minutes to approve here, even if we didn't have the presentation, I would still want to have a meeting for the opportunity for the residents to come in and speak, address their council, and address the administration. So I have a couple stories to tell. You know, a lot of times, we get up here and we address, we give stories based on our experience as being on the council and different things that residents say to us as council members, but tonight, I have two stories to tell as a resident, not as a council member. Okay. Story number one. Earlier this year, I- yeah, I got time, right? I got time, so I figured I'd take advantage of it. So story number one was on my house, a portion of my house is a flat roof, and so about every- I don't know however long it is, depends on how good the last roofing job was, but every once in a while, I believe this is the third time, been on that house for 22 years, I believe this is the third time I've had to redo the flat roof part of the house, rest of the house, just once when Hurricane Wilma came through. So it was time, found a good roofer, brought him out, and excellent guy, by the way, if anybody's looking for a roofer, I can highly recommend this guy. Did a very professional job. You know, before he knew I was on the council, he says, I'm not doing the job unless we get permits and the whole nine yards, so I was impressed right off the bat from him. So anyway, so we went and we got the permits, but I was very curious to hear from him the experience as a resident for how long it took to get the permit, how- what he felt of the-
Process.
The whole process, yeah, the inspectors and the whole nine yards. And the permit took about, I think it was six business days, pretty nice. When we got through the inspections, he came up to me and he said, by now, he did know that I was on the council by now, and he said, you know, I just want to tell you that I do roofs all through Broward County, and the inspectors that you have here in southwest ranches are among the best I've seen. He says, I knew the- he said, I didn't know the one guy, but I knew the other guy. He said, he was a builder in South Florida for many years, and now I guess he's retired and he works for CAP, and he did a great job. He inspected what he was supposed to inspect and did the whole nine yards. So I just wanted to, you know, story one, give a kind of a shout out to-
Kudos.
-CAP and kudos, and yeah, yeah, the whole process went faster than I thought and very professional, very well. Story number two is an event that's coming up in the Bright Cruz household next month. If the place looks a little crowded next month, it's because the Bright Cruz household is having a huge, and I do mean huge, family event in mid-April. So we literally will have hundreds of Bright Cruises and Williams and everything.
Cool.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, pretty cool. But I heard a rumor that the council in town had passed a new ordinance on parking, and I was concerned-
Worried about your ticket?
And I was concerned that my family members would be ticketed when they showed up, so I did the right, you know, resident thing.
Didn't get a permit for the event?
I did, I did. That's the story. So I went to Town Hall and decided I better get myself a permit to make sure that, you know, the family members don't get ticketed. And so, why do I tell those two stories? To waste time? No, no, no. Although it may, it may have done that, but I wanted to relay to you the cost of the two permits. Permit number one to do the roof was $108.18. Pretty darn good.
Very reasonable.
Permit number two for the parking, $110. It was more expensive to get the permit for the parking than it was to get a permit to redo my roof. I think that's- I kept getting my council member a call, but I always got a busy signal. I don't know why.
Did it include a valet, or?
Yeah, do you get valet for the parking?
So I do think that the parking fees is something we need to take a look at as a council. I will say this, there's a happy story to the end. I got the permit for the parking just because I wanted to be absolutely positive that there was no issues. I heard back from the administration that there's absolutely no-
How many days did that take for that permit?
That took, it was, it took about 20 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But turns out, I don't need it, so it'll be fine. But I do think it brings the point that we do need to look at the cost of that permit for a parking that's kind of crazy, or special permit.
Okay.
All right, those are my stories. I'm done. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Gary?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Couple things. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Those of you out in TV land, thank you for watching. This Saturday, Water Matters.
Oh, yeah.
Treetops Park, park admission, you get to go in there, you'll recoup that and all kinds of rain gauges and little yard animals and especially some- if you get there early enough, you get some really good fruit trees, believe it or not. So I encourage everybody to go to it. It's a lot of fun, and you get to see our booth there, actually, it's more than a booth. It looks like, I don't know how to describe it, it's a whole garden, you know, that Chris, Chris Branlow and December put together every year. The other thing I want to mention is we have Rolling Oaks Easter egg hunt in the park at Rolling Oaks on April Fool's Day, the first. I've heard that Easter Bunny's going to be there, so bring your kids, and everybody should have a lot of fun. I believe there's-
That's a heads up to me, I'm sure, right?
Well, I volunteered, but, you know, don't tell the kids that. Oh, yeah, I was supposed to ask-
I won't, I won't.
I was supposed to ask your wife if I could borrow the costume.
Well, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so I volunteered again for it, but anyway, so it's a lot of fun. I believe there's going to be a continental breakfast served during the time, and usually we have 300 to 400 kids, and it is a lot of fun for that morning. So I just want to mention that. The other thing, the last thing I'll talk about is, Steve, ditto, the town meetings. Okay. I think the town meetings, regardless of what's on the agenda, is part of our job. We show up here, if somebody doesn't want to come here, you know, they can opt out. I mean, there's no real requirement, get an excused absence, you know, on the dais, the staff, they're pretty much geared for it. But the big thing I want to emphasize is that we set the calendar up in advance, like in November, for the entire year, and we do have a series of three months where it's just one month, November, December, January, and we can always call a special meeting if we need, you know, more meetings, you know, to cover stuff. But I certainly don't want to go back to, because of time constraints or that we only came down to one meeting, the, what I used to call the Cinderella meetings, where we had to vote on it at 11:00 or we all turned into pumpkins, you know, that sort of thing. And that's exactly what can happen if you're not careful with a policy like that. Stuff will start stacking up if you go to the one meeting, and then, you know, you've got a marathon meeting in May, April, June, whatever, and if it's a hot-button issue and everybody wants to, you know, get up to the mic and say something about it, it could, that could go on for 30 minutes, just that alone, and several other things, and the point I'm trying to make is, we have a schedule, I think we need to maintain that schedule. If we need to alter it, we've got another shot at it in October and November for the following year, you know? I think that's the logical place to have that discussion, not during the actual time. Just by luck or happenstance, however you want to call it, that there's not a lot of items on here, you know, we could have had quasi-judicials in here, we could have had a lot of things, and it just didn't happen this period, at this time, for this year. So that's not to say it's not going to happen next month, it's not to say it's going to happen next year. So I think we need to be here, at least the majority of the council. Andy is a direct staff, that's his ballywick in terms of who's here for staff and things of that nature, but I think it's one of the most important things we do is access to our residents, so I'm wholeheartedly in the camp that we need to have, we need to have these meetings as we have them scheduled, you know? That's how I feel, and I said that long before I got on the council, too, so I just want to mention that. And I'm out of gas, that's it.
Okay. All right. Couple things. Dee and I are going to ride in the Cooper City Founders Parade this weekend in Cooper City, so that's going to be an exciting little thing to do, and Water Matters Day is be there or be square. It's a great event, it's a lot of fun, it's educational, and it's even fun for the adults, much less the kids. The kids have a ball, but the adults have a great time also, and if you want to bring your dogs out, you can bring your dogs and stuff, so it's a great, great event. The other thing I want to say is that Vice Mayor Mr. Bright Cruz and myself and Dee Schroeder are all going to Tallahassee next week, so we're playing a hit on all the hot-button items, don't want to mention them here right off the top of our head, but we will be working behind the scenes to fix issues that are- behind the scenes to fix issues that are close to our heart and current issues that have come up in town. So, we will be pounding the pavement and seeing who we need to and pleading our cause in cases, asking for money and thanking for money. But other than that, I don't think I've got much else, so. We'll go on. Andy, you're up.
Don't, don't forget that Aster's going to tag along with us, too, so he's going to be a big help.
Oh, one, one thing I want to mention that I forgot I should have mentioned first. Sarah Physically was in the hospital, she's home and much better, and so I want to say congrats, thank you, and I'm glad she's feeling better.
Frank, show the flowers.
So, Andy? Keith, Keith, you're up next.
Sorry, we were discussing a very important life safety issue that surprised me. Everyone check your gas before you leave your house every single time you leave. All right, you know, I, after listening to Vice Mayor, I have an interesting story to tell you, my permit was like $30,000, so...
I guess you have a bigger roof.
Yeah. I guess it's all who you know. But no, I, one thing Russell remarked when you said that, so I just wanted to say it publicly, is we worked really hard with CAP to get their permit fees in line. So, I'm glad to hear that that went so far to make a reasonable price for a minor roofing repair. What Russell did comment is that although we went through that exercise a couple of months ago, we have not yet done that same exercise on the town's own fees. So, so you bring up a good point that that is something that all of us should revisit now that we worked on the CAP side to work on the town side as well. So, I just wanted to mention that. In regards to legal news that's going on, we, to all of our surprise, won the summary judgment against Pembroke Pines, okay? So, which, which, you know, I came here a couple of months ago and I said to you, the mayor, the council mayor Schroeder were there, it was a tough argument, we didn't know how we were going to do, the judge found for the town in all aspects of their motion, so, which was very good. But what does that mean? That means that we're heading to trial, okay? So, that means that I had to get my insurance carrier involved to tell him that we're going to trial. And with that came my standard CYA letter to the town saying that this is a very tough case. It's a very tough case, there's no guarantee of success, there's absolutely no guarantee of success. So, I drafted the letter, sent it to Andy, which is a requirement that we do before heading into any trial. I recommend to every client, including the town or any others, that juries, you never know what they're going to do. Judges during trial, you never know what they're going to do. So, you should always explore possibilities of settlement if they should ever come up. That being said, after I sent the, what I call a CYA letter, that's the legal terminology for that, after the CYA letter, I reached out to Pembroke Pines and, and we did what's called a, a notice of scheduling for the trial, which looks like to be in November of this year, and there was a provision in that, that, that required mediation. So, we reached out to Pines and say, "There's a requirement for mediation." They filed a notice with the court saying, "We've already mediated, we're not talking, we're going to trial." So, while I would tell you that I would explore any ability to settlement, unfortunately, I don't know if there's going to be another opportunity because of their filing of their notice saying that they're dispensing with the ability to mediate further, that they just want to try this case. The hardest part about this case, has always been the hardest part about this case, is that the federal government refuses to testify. And not only refuses, they obtained a judicial order saying that they were not going to testify. So, the only document we have that the federal government issued, and it's a very important document, is an affidavit from the Director of ICE, okay? And I'll tell you how this is all interesting and, and only because we have unlimited time tonight, that I'm even going to get into the legal specifics here, because it's really neat when you think about it. The town sues ICE under what's called the 2E regulation, which means that we sued them so that the federal government could determine whether or not they could testify in our matter, because we believe their testimony to be vitally important to be before a jury and said, "This is what really happened." Pines jumped on the bandwagon, sued ICE also, okay? And said, "We want them to testify, too, because we're going to prove to you that what you're saying is incorrect." Okay, fine, so we both had litigations against ICE. Our litigation went to the end, which is very quickly, this isn't like a costly litigation, it's a judge looking at the pleadings and making an instant decision. The judge looked at it and said, "No, you're not getting the Director of ICE to come to Southwest Ranches to testify, that's never going to happen," and they denied it. We filed an immediate appeal, which is just a document saying, "We appeal," and that was denied, I think quicker than we submitted it to the court. Pines, rather than getting denied, and by the way, 99.99% of the time, you get denied, you know, the, there's this massive shield up on the federal government that only the president can really wave.
Call.
We don't think we haven't tried. So, Pines, rather than taking it to the mat, after probably seeing what happened to the town, said, "We'd like to settle with you, government, we're going to settle for an affidavit of the Director of ICE telling us what really happened," okay? They provided the affidavit to Pines, which we knew about but really didn't dissect fully, and then came the motion for summary judgment. And Pines says, "We have an affidavit from ICE that we're submitting in favor of our summary judgment, and this says all the reasons why, you know, they didn't come to Southwest Ranches, and, and this proves that we're right and you have to dismiss the case." But you look down the affidavit and the fifth item says, "Opposition from the city of Pembroke Pines." So, we're all sitting there saying, "I can't believe they just produced this document to the judge. This has to be like manna from heaven, that they actually just produced this document." So, we get up and we say, "Your Honor, this is fair game, we're using this at trial, and we're telling you now, we're using this at trial, this is the proof we needed." So, so the motion ends, everything ends, and, and we go back to our office and, and the judge very quickly issues their denial of their motion for summary judgment. Normally, it takes like six months, she did it in like...
Second time?
Yeah, second time, but this is like, you know, 15 days. So, we call opposing counsel, Bruce Johnson, and we say, "We'd like to, you know, we're now going to enter into a stipulation that we're going to use the affidavit at trial." "No, you're going to have to file a motion." He goes, "I'm never going to allow you to use that at trial." And we said, "You just brought it up, you know, you brought up this document, you know, we're going to use this at trial." So, now we're going to have to have a hearing at some point with the judge to whether or not, you know, that document gets admitted at trial. If that document gets admitted to trial, we have significant proof from the federal government that Pines was the reason why it didn't come here. It's an affidavit by the Director of ICE saying, "We didn't come here because of opposition from the city of Pembroke Pines." It's clear as day. If we don't have that document and the judge says, "No, that's hearsay, I'm not going to allow that in," we need to prove a case based on circumstantial evidence. Circumstantial evidence is everything that led up to the, to the ultimate decision of the correction facility not coming to the town. That is the risk that we have, you know, as to whether or not enough circumstantial evidence will be before a jury that they'll look at it and say, "Wow, that's a lot." I think I have the same worries and that Pines has the same worries. I wrote you guys a CYA letter, Sam Goran wrote his client a CYA letter. In fact, not only did they write a CYA letter, it's like this thick and it says all the reasons why they're going to lose the case. So, you know, it, it's one of those things that you would think at some point Andy would get a call in the next six months saying, "What the heck are we doing here? You know, your town might have a massive litigation against you, you know, may have a massive judgment against us, that's going to be, you know, 20 to 40 million in size, you know, what are we doing here?" But still, to this day, Andy has not received a single phone call, and as a result, we're going full steam ahead. And, and that's where that case currently lies. I told Andy, "We're preparing a summary judgment now on interference." There's no doubt they interfered, there's no question they interfered. So, from our standpoint, the judge should grant summary judgment on interference and then just go straight to a trial on damages and call it a day. So, that's where we stand after that. We can have the shade session if you want, I'm even happy to have an open session because, you know, everything I've told you is where we're at right now, but that's where that case lies. Other than that, no further comments.
Cool. Awesome. Andy, and if you would start out with your, at my request of the tree permit fee and the resident, and that funny thing that my email, to share with, because we shared all the permitting stuff.
Sure. All right, one more permit story, as long as we're on a roll tonight. It was a resident in town who had applied for a tree removal permit, and they do that through Robert, through code enforcement.
And it's $170 or $175?
$170, which is, that was actually the fee that, that we inherited from Melgren's office, who also used Casey Lee for those inspections, and, and we carried that fee forward. So, this resident had paid the fee, had had the tree removed, but, but had called the mayor to complain about the cost of that permit and thought that since we're cost recovery, if, for example, December's going to go out and do those inspections, that, that the town's cost should be less. So, the mayor brought it to my attention, I started to look into it, and I sat down with, with Robert, who's on his way to Orlando, so he's not with us this evening, but the $170 permit, I had to understand where that came from. And so, as, as we've covered with all of you in one-on-one budget meetings, the town does utilize December to go out and inspect for invasive exotics, and we do not charge for that. On canopy trees, legitimate, you know, good trees that we want to keep, December doesn't do those inspections, the town utilizes Casey Lee. Casey Lee goes out, and, and the resident had thought, because they had sent a picture to Robert to provide that, that the inspector could, in effect, phone it in, and that was not the case. Tree removal does require two separate inspections. One, the inspector goes out to verify, you know, what's been claimed, what trees are actually there, what's going to be removed, what, what damage might be done to the overall canopy, whether that tree needs to be replaced or not, and then goes back, once the work is completed, goes back and does a second inspection to verify what was done was what was stated. Now, you're all going to change to arborist as your career when I, when I tell you the next step. The, the cost for that, the industry norm, is $80 per inspection. Now, whether it's one tree, 10 trees, doesn't matter, it's, it's $80 for that inspection. So, actually, the cost to Robert to have Casey Lee go out and do those two inspections on behalf of that resident was $160. So, there was really only a $10 administrative fee to process that paperwork. So, we actually called that resident this morning, had that discussion with him and explained that to him, and he was certainly okay once, once he understood that. So, you know, a lot of times on some of these permits and the cost, people don't necessarily understand kind of what's, what's behind it and the work that goes into that. We'll take a look at that special event permit and see what, what additional processing and inspecting is involved in that. But I will say on that, the initial permit is 110. For people who pull additional permits going forward, once some of that background work is done, additional permits are only $35. So, if this was your second one, Vice Mayor, it would have been $35.
Oh, good to know.
Can I try, can I chime in here?
Go ahead, actually.
Andy, I, I just want to state for the record that there's, I believe it's five or six species that require no permit, removal by the town, invasive exotics, bichopia, one of them, the acacia, curly leaf acacia tree, and Florida holly, Brazilian pepper, you know. I just want to make sure that's on the record, that you don't need the permit to remove those.
You still have to call it in.
No, you don't have to call it in. If a resident has invasive exotics that are on that list, well, they, they don't need to. We, we recommend that they do let us know, so that we can do that inspection, and we don't charge for that, we do utilize December for those inspections. We do not charge for that, that's really just to protect them, that, that what they took out is exactly that. But that's at their election, that's not, that's not required. You can cut a holly bush down without talking to anybody.
Right.
You're allowed. So, I just want to, just want to make sure everybody understands that.
All right.
Just a couple of other items, I just want to let you all know that our, our bid is out now for solid waste and bulk collection, recycling collection. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting here in council chambers last Thursday morning. I would say we probably had 40 to 50 people here representing, I think, seven or eight different firms, so we had a very good turnout. There were questions that were addressed at that meeting, staff, you know, with Sandy has been, has been working on answering and responding to those on behalf of those, those various companies. So, we're, we're very hopeful that we're going to get some, some solid bids in and, and be able to give you some, certainly some good choices. But that process is underway. We all know we continue to have problems with our current vendor, I, you know, we can talk about that till we're blue in the face. I think what's, what's going to help in this case is, is getting a new vendor in and a new contract that I, I do want to thank Keith, because one of the things that we really wanted to put into the next contract was some teeth, and, and we've been able to do that. So, you know, I, I certainly expect much better performance out of, out of whoever our next vendor is, and, and if not, they're going to be punished for it. But, you know, we want to be positive, we want to hope for a good relationship and good service going forward. Two other things, one, I have some information that I just want to share with you as soon as I'm done with my report, just some take-home reading for all of you. And just last but not least, there was some discussion on whether or not we should have meetings or not have meetings, depending on what's on the agenda. I, I heard two council members speak in favor of not having meetings, I heard two council members speak in favor of maintaining the current schedule. Based on what I heard, the, the current schedule will continue unless, unless that changes.
I'd like to add one thing to that, though, as we move forward with it. If you, if, if it's not necessary for you to have staff here and you don't need them, and it's a light like tonight, I'm fine with you not having them here, I guess is where I'm going with that. And I think the council would feel the same way, but...
Mayor, I appreciate that, but one of the things I've done with staff in the past is generally, once we get through public comment or, or council comments, you know, I, I kind of will let them start slipping away and leaving, because I never know when those residents, particular residents may come in with different issues. I, I don't know what those issues are in advance oftentimes, and it's, sometimes it's helpful to have the appropriate professionals here to, to address it if we need to.
Okay.
But I, I thank you for the offer.
Yeah, I just wanted to leave it up to your discretion, kind of as needed for you. So, all right. You have something else you want to say, Dee, go ahead.
I just thought, you know, it, it was changed a while back, and I remember when we changed it and why we changed it, because we didn't want to be here until 12:00, 1:00. But if you're making the schedule up ahead of time and you know there's really not going to be anything on it, except for approval of the minutes, you can always add an extra meeting as well as the other way, too, you know? And, and I just, like I said, you know, I just don't think it's, you know, we, we know who attends the meetings, and there's usually, most of the staff is here, you know, that needs to be here, December and Emily and, and whatever, and like I said, Marty's in the back, and he's not out here right now, but I just feel it's, you know, a cost to the town, burning the lights and being here. And I would never want anybody to show up because we had a scheduled meeting and it be dark. That would not be a nice thing to do. But if we redid the calendar and we scheduled it for, and we knew there was not going to be anything on it, so that would be out there in advance, so people would know that there is no meeting tonight because we had nothing on there for that. You know, I was going to say five or less things, but if, if there's absolutely nothing on there, I, I don't see a reason to have everything and all operations up and going, you know, it's a way of saving money, and...
Yeah, I think we'll have to address that when the next, next year for the next calendar, but I get it, you know, because we already have them on the calendar and they're already set in place.
Right.
So, before we're, or when we set the next calendar, we'll discuss it again at that time.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's, you know, anything we need to do. I, I mean, I get both sides of it, so...
No, there's, there's pros and cons to both sides of it, as, as Steve brought out, so, okay, I'm good with that.
Awesome. Nobody else want to pick anything up they forgot? Okay. Russell, the minutes? You just said we got to approve these minutes? How about any public comment on our minutes? All right, come on up. You guys don't care we do a motion, a second, first, doesn't really matter, I don't think...
And I'll just give you my two cents on the, on the meetings.
Yeah, sure.
I know, because if they are scheduled, you, you schedule them at the beginning of the year, so everyone knows when they are and you can plan whatever. You don't really know what, I mean, thank God, you know, nothing right now is going on, but you don't know a year in advance that something isn't going to come up, and you also do get a lot of valuable information a lot of time, just even if there's not anything on the agenda, but getting all of your reports. My two cents.
Well, this is the only time we get to discuss anything town-related, so...
Well, that's what, right, so it's this, otherwise you end up with too much to talk about when you have to consolidate your meetings. But my, on the minutes, the only comment is, in regards, it's in the, um... But my, on the minutes, my only comment is, in regards, it's in the, um, when you were talking about the, the property.
Hey Debbie?
Mm-hmm.
Can you?
In the mic a little more.
When you were talking about the, when you all started talking about the, the property, where, that possibly we're gonna put the town hall and blah, blah, that part.
Yeah, yeah, the five acres and-
Yeah, so in here it says that, um, you asked Emily to give the costs and all that kind of stuff, and she stated that it was, uh, what, approached four million dollars. What I believe happened is you asked for that, and then Andy respectfully asked that you give the staff time to put together a proper report to come back with, and that the numbers that you were given were the most conservative numbers in the, in regards to them being the highest numbers.
Mm-hmm.
So that's my only-
Okay, well, those-
Because in here it says she stated it, and it's, I don't believe that-
We were just handed to us, which we haven't had a chance to look at, um, those, those numbers and that stuff related to the parks and all that, so we'll be addressing it here in the next probably couple of meetings.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying the way they reflect, if someone were to read these minutes, not knowing, not being at this meeting, they would take it that Emily stated, "This is the cost," when, in act, what really happened was, you, she didn't speak, Andy respectfully asked not to have her come up, let them put together a proper report, because, and those numbers that you were given were the top, the highest.
So you think we shouldn't modify it in some way?
I, 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 I do, for people who are reading, who can come back at a later time and say, "Well, this is, it was," especially, you know, you're going to talk and have different, talk to advisory groups and different, I think everyone should have, get all the information.
Well, we'll discuss it real quick and see if we wanna, what we want to do, but thank you, Debbie, appreciate it. Any, uh, Andy, any thoughts on that?
I'm just rereading them right now, just to, just to double-check that.
All right, take a few minutes, let's see what we want.
If I can just comment on that?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I'm reading that closer, and, uh, yeah, I, that, um, well, I think that number was thrown out there. That certainly was not, not the impression that I got. The impression is, is what Debbie was saying, which basically this was kicked back to administration to be able to do research and come up with, uh, the appropriate.
Yeah, when I read it, it says-
Keith, go ahead.
She stated that the cost approached four million.
I would amend that language, should just say, "The mayor advised that she stated."
Yeah.
Because that's what happened at the meeting.
Correct.
If we can make that change?
Whoa, 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 say it again?
Go ahead.
What, what she's properly noting is that Emily actually never testified or spoke at that hearing. So that, that one clause that she's finding fault with should read, "The mayor advised that she stated."
Oh, right, but I think the point-
That's what you're looking for, correct? That's the issue?
Well, and I think-
That and the four million dollar number, I, I don't think that number should be here.
Oh, but that is what-
The number came from me.
The point is that the action that was taken was to, to kick it back to administration to do research and, and provide the real numbers. That was the action that was taken.
Right.
So I think that's what it should state in there, which is what you have done. So, but that, and it was based on that discussion, and that's not listed here. So I think what is listed here is, you know, can, can be amended, as Keith said, I don't have a problem with that. But the real point is that it was kicked back to administration to research as much as possible, what, what the real cost would be, and forward that out to the council and the boards for their discussion.
Let, let me ask you a question, because you're really, then, you're, uh, the way I understand it now is different than before. So you're advising the last, really, two sentences you want amended. The last sentence says, "Town Administrator Burns asked that staff be allowed to bring this before the advisory board first, and then report back to the town council at a future meeting." And then it says, "Vice Mayor Bright Cruz asked that the boards, uh, be provided with the projected cost so that they have the full picture." Isn't that what happened?
That is what happened. And then, but what's missing is what happened after that, which was basically the administration, um, taking that and saying that, "Yes, we will do that, and we will provide that information." That's what's missing.
We don't have it right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just want, uh, the, another last sentence, just saying, "Town Administrator, Administration agreed, uh, agreed to proceed as directed."
Right. Is that, is that, Debbie, is that where you were going? Sorry to interrupt the conversation back there.
You know, we were gonna put a classroom back in that corner with-
After council-
Can we get the TV camera on that?
Hold on, Keith, Keith is trying to get it out here.
After the Vice Mayor's, um, comments on what he wanted to do, which was, uh, uh, Vice Mayor Bright Cruz asked that the boards be provided with the projected cost so that they would have the full picture. And then we're gonna add a sentence that says, "Town Administration agreed to proceed as directed."
To me, that's what-
And then just write that in, in what you said before.
And then-
Yeah, we added that in already. So if there's a motion to approve as amended, we-
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we'll take it. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to play.